Maybe with protection.
Yeah.
It's good to watch. May all be.
May what?
Yeah.
Oh. Hey, Bill, don't. Hey, do me a favor. Tape that game for me.
Is that George?
That's the National Game, should be LSU.
Where was?
I don't know. The true sports man. What game?
Tell them Red Sox. Tell them Red Sox.
Yeah, it's all the Red.
Tell them the Red Sox. Red Sox. Okay.
Eight o'clock.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, I should take one.
That's the BCS championship.
Oh. We said, I'm hiring. You just mean, I'm gonna cut the debt.
Oh, yeah. One after another.
We watched football.
And you watched them off.
There are bowls and the toilet bowl.
Yes. The only ball is in there. That's in there.
They wrote it on there.
Yeah. Who said the kids?
You see, they got the ball.
Well, Notre Daniels. He's got their ball.
I'll go ahead and lead the pledge. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal. Okay, the first item on the agenda is pursuant subdivision. I wasn't quite sure exactly what it was, but request for conservation easement credit. No offense. Rob, you want to take the lead out of this?
Mr. Supervisor, if I might.
And will need a...
If my mic is the fault.
Because of...
Sit down.
He's probably put right on the table here now.
I'm sure he is.
Now, if people come to me.
He's not starting to use the mic.
Pursuits in connection with the subdivision application, which received a conditional final subdivision approval back in January of 2010. It's been pending since that time, trying to satisfy a myriad number of conditions. And in that process, we have found a buyer for this side of the road, which is or would be lot 27, the subdivision. It's divided by Maple Avenue. It's a separate section block and lot in its own right as such. It could be sold without the subdivision being finalized. The issue arises that this parcel is encumbered by the open space, the conservation easement, which is integral to the entire subdivision. There's approximately 52 acres that are encumbered by that conservation, excuse me, will be encumbered by the conservation easement out of a 60-acre parcel. And if we were to proceed with the sale, encumbered by that conservation easement, and for some reason, the current plan is not finally approved, we will have used up 52 acres of the entire parcel to satisfy your open space requirement when this comes back for another subdivision approval. It seemed to me a bit of a risky thing to do. The understanding is certainly that this conservation easement satisfies the need for open space for the entire subdivision. But before proceeding with the sale of it and risking the loss of approval, we thought we would come to the town board and request an acknowledgement simply that the acreage, the 52 acres that's encumbering this parcel would be used to satisfy any future open space requirement for the remaining parcel if it were to, or not be finally approved. I think that says it succinctly.
Dennis?
This is the map. I'm sorry.
Dennis, what kind of documentation?
Well, that's the one lot. Green is the one lot.
This is by the black here on the other side of the road.
Oh, yeah. No, no. I go back to when they first started this.
Just for the board certification, the planning board reviewed this. They have no problem with this. The issue being because it's a natural subdivision, the division by the road, et cetera, as Mr. Dickover just mentioned, that could be sold separately even at present, but they're using it for the purposes of the open space qualification.
Exactly.
So, that's a town board matter. I mean, it's our code, if you will. So, we can do it by what I call a simple resolution, acknowledging, if the board saw the plan, acknowledging the factual circumstances and that, my wording, unless for some reason the code were to be changed in the future so as to increase the open space requirement above that 52 acres, that would suffice for any development project on the undeveloped southern side of the road. Okay? So, it would be to that effect.
But this is subdivided? No, this is all one.
I don't... Oh, it's obviously gonna subdivide.
No.
I don't think so.
The buyer parcels encumbered by the conservation easement, in terms of which it cannot be further subdivided.
Yeah, see, that's it. Right.
They're gonna farm that property?
They are. The prospective purchaser will be, plans on farming.
Well, could they possibly give us the conservation, I don't know when, could they give us the conservation easement now?
Yes.
With the understanding that it does cover that.
They would.
So, we do have the land, but then they wouldn't be able to change the subdivision at all. That subdivision would be the subdivision.
Right. But see, what I'm saying, and it was Dickover's after, let's take that subdivision present. Call it 20 lots. I don't know what is. For some reason, if the planning board, because of topography, water, slumps, wet land, cuts or kills a couple of lots there, or for that matter, they need to get more lots and they reconfigure it so as to increase it. All I'm saying is if there were an additional requirement beyond the acreage that they're conserving at the present time.
Right.
Otherwise, yeah, we acknowledge it by us in a resolution that we would recognize it as such going forward and if the planning board be so direct.
Now, this, you said 67 acres?
But your point's well taken.
No, no.
You get the conservation easement now?
What I'm saying is if they're selling that parcel with the property, give us the conservation easement.
Oh, yeah. Because you want the buyer to be subject to it also.
Absolutely.
That's right. This is approximately 60 plus or minus.
Yeah, I don't have anything to worry about.
Right. Right. Exactly. Yeah. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, the status...
I do. The status of the conservation easement drafting at this point is that it's been approved by Kelly Nauton from the Planning Board Council.
Correct.
I believe Mr. Kuplik is also seen it and given it your blessing. I don't want to speak...
No, that is, that is true. Now, it hasn't been donated to us or more branded, if you will.
But they've donated to us before that's sold.
They effectively put it on the property. Yes, they recorded the easement.
In other words, what I'm saying to you is just to make sure everyone's on the same page, everyone is protected, including the buyer yourself, do the donation of that easement first.
Return the easement.
And now, don't have to worry. The easement is on that property, that subdivision. You sell the one lot, including the parcel easement on it, makes no difference.
Right.
Because they're buying it understanding that there is an easement. Right now, there is no easement. If they're buying it, that could change too. I don't know legally, they could say, hey, I don't care what you used when I bought this lot, I bought this whole thing and there was no easement.
Right, it would be recorded first.
On the day that we close.
Allow me to address the purchaser?
I don't know.
Is the purchaser aware of the conservation easement?
Make any sense?
They've reviewed it, they've commented on it and asked for changes, some of which have gone back to the planning board and it's just been approved as well.
So, there is dialogue. What I'm saying...
Oh, yeah. So, the timing of it, so you're aware, is we don't want to encumber that parcel unless we in fact sell it.
Right.
So, the conservation easement will be signed. It'll be by both the dedicator and I think it requires a town signature as well.
It does.
It will be held in escrow. It will be taken to the closing and will be delivered and recorded.
And recorded with deed. That's how it was done.
Well, suppose that it's not sold?
It will be recorded when that closing takes place.
Well, if it's parcel of that closing...
If it's not sold and it's not recorded, it's subject to the overall requirements of subdivision.
Like it is now? Right. Then we don't have a conservation easement.
At that moment, but it's also not sold.
I understand.
And it's also not subdivided in theory as far as that project goes.
I understand. I really understand. There shouldn't be a condition that we, the town board, should be involved with when it's sold, when it's not. All I'm saying to you is you're gonna sell this before the deed changes hands.
Simultaneous.
Well?
Yeah. At the closing.
Yeah. The reason we go into that, Phil knows.
Yes.
In fact, you're from the great tower out in Hamilton.
Now, you know where...
Where the attorneys took those instruments and didn't record them.
You withheld it?
Well, Paul, had I done that at the time, it would not have arisen. But so, that's a possibility, Phil.
Or it's a possibility that I don't want to see again because we had a water tower that we didn't own.
Right, the issue.
And there was a subdivision on there that was holding us hostage for 37 lots because our water tower for that subdivision was on property that we...
Was promised to us, was donated to us.
Not been promised.
The deeds were cut and John Mayo did not record that.
And we lost.
I dare say the circumstances are quite different, but...
But nevertheless, yeah. I understand.
Okay, I mean, I'm well, maybe it's going on.
What Phil is trying to do, he's trying to learn from, this is learning from experience.
Experience.
Yeah. You know what we can do?
I'm hearing that.
I think it's a great idea.
You got the bulk of the idea.
Dennis, I think that you're gonna need to, from a legal perspective, make sure that we're secure of this.
I understand.
Beyond that, does anybody in the board have any problem doing this?
No. What does the conservation easement tell the owner or whatever to do? One of them naturally is farming, as I say, but what are the things? You said there was gonna be some modifications and stuff, so...
That was one of them, actually.
Can't they do once the conservation easement is in place?
That was one of them, George. The original drafting of it, and it's gone through a number of permutations, didn't specifically allow agricultural use. So, that was added back in. Third, it's more restrictive than what it allows. It's more restricting what you can't do.
What can't you do?
It's contemplated that we would not do anything until we physically see it.
No, but we're just asking the question.
I understand, but what I'm saying is it may even be premature unless you have the language, because most times these conservation easements run 20, 30 pages.
Right, well, we've had some. You know, just a kind of general way.
Yeah, this I couldn't tell you.
Yeah. The other thing I will tell you, what's upstairs mentioned, 50 years from now...
Who knows?
Once it's sold, it's sold.
But it's conservation easement that they want to put up for wind towers.
Yeah.
But is that allowed or is it not allowed? In the original line?
No.
It said you can't recall this, you can't that, but it never referred to farming. The creator at that time didn't expect it to continue with agriculture. It says you can't do anything.
But we see, once again, the town's position would be, although it may say it can be used for agriculture, who knows what it's gonna be used for, depending upon what the restrictions are. I understand.
I'm gonna put a John Dillon, John did Dillon shop.
Or windmills or whatever.
But in addition to that, yeah, they can do some farm agricultural manufacturing.
Yeah.
They can do that. You can have a manufacturing type plant on there, as long as it's frag...
Depends upon the language, yeah.
But the other thing, I'll tell you, just to eliminate this, that is the easement property for the whole subdivision. Do you have any intentions of not going through with the subdivision and that's why you wouldn't want to? Or can you just file the conservation easement and move on? Once it's done, as long as you're gonna go through with the subdivision, what difference is it if it's filed now or waiting until that's sold? I don't think the sale of that piece of property is anything we're doing.
Well, let me see if I can address your question, because it's not as simple as really that. The conditions that are part and parcel of the subdivision approval are fairly linked. There's almost 36 of them, I believe.
Right.
But we're not done with that yet.
Okay.
This board has granted an extension of an exemptions from some prior zoning.
Right.
The planning board has granted a number of extensions on the conditional approval.
Right.
As time continues to go on, laws may change, both your own, both state, DEC regulations, Army Corps Windland Regulations may change. Any of them have the possibility of rendering the current plan, I won't say null and void, but subject to having to be revised. And if we do what you're suggesting and impose the conservation easement now and the plan gets changed, we may in fact find that we shot ourselves in the butt, much as selling it, selling this now without some understanding that these 52 acres satisfy a part and partial of your open space requirement.
We have the same problem in reverse.
Correct.
Because it changes forever. You have the exact same problem in reverse.
Well, I know that some of the conservation easements we have today, we've accepted as no hunting, no this, no that. And we want you, item by item by item, whether it be 30 pages, 20 pages, you know, and I think it's gonna be important for us, Dennis.
I agree.
To see that, and we're pretty easy to get along with, but we're gonna want something that we think will protect future generations from having something out there that you can put a landfill on or a junkyard or whatever because they can't grow enough vegetables to make money.
Just to repeat what I said earlier, Kelly Nauton has seen the draft conservation easement and given her blessing, so the planning board has done the same. I believe, Dennis...
Yeah, I've seen it. No, I did not look at it from the perspective of the town board, what your interests may be. Yeah, I understand.
Nobody to me, you know.
Well, you know, we had a problem, for example. We accepted one and said, no hunting. Well, sure enough, one generation later, the guy wants to hunt. We said, no, you cannot hunt on it. And it was a big to do. It was part of the conservation easement. It had changed the generation of ownership already and so it happened.
The no hunting prohibition is in the current draft?
Right.
If you want, I can paraphrase it if you're interested. If you're not...
I'm not gonna wanna see it, to be honest with you. That's why I'm not trying to rush it. I'm just trying to see it.
What we can do, between now and Thursday night, if we can just get a copy of it so we can read it in the private of our own office.
Yeah.
I don't think that... Does anybody on the board have any real problem with this if we can understand it?
We have one question.
Sure.
If they lose lots over here for whatever reason, now what do you do with the amount of open space that they have to dedicate to the town?
That's correct.
That's correct.
It'd be too late.
It's done.
Right, it's done.
That's all I'm saying.
If it goes the other way, they increase the lot now.
Either way, they always bought or they always...
Well, what they have to do is deal with the property they have. This is how they all own it no more.
Yeah, I assume that's big enough to qualify whatever number of lots.
Well, we see this. We have conditional final approval.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just want, I was saying...
Okay.
I only hold you 42 acres, so what do you think?
16, oh, not 58.
So, we're all on the same.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure it's right in the final...
We will provide a copy.
Get a copy.
Or you can do that or get it to me and I'll circulate it.
One other minor question I have here, you know, you have this all in this yellow in terms of conservation easement, but the green, it appears, is the building lot.
Let me just clarify for you. The conservation easement, George, is the hatched area.
Right.
The entire parcel, the 60 acres, is in the yellow.
Right.
The green touches in there are upland areas.
That's the upland with the bump. Oh, I see. Okay. So, this is not part of the building lot?
No.
That was the...
There's not a building lot there.
Yeah, I thought it was the extension of the building lot.
No, no. You did not build on this, is that correct?
And you can build on it.
Wait, right here?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
You get the one lot. One lot.
Okay.
That's why I thought the green area was, was the building lot. There's one lot.
All right. So, Dennis, we can get that all over the next...
Yeah, get it to me and I'll circulate it.
Now, what is your timing on this? When is the sale pending for?
Well, the purchaser today circulated an email saying they want to close this in two weeks. You know, if the board were to accommodate us with a resolution Thursday night, we can probably meet that timetable, but as these things go, I dare say...
And then I can work out that, assuming it's gonna go.
Right.
I can work out the mechanics, because I would hold the documents, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So, if you could drop that copy?
We can get that stuff to Dennis tomorrow. Whatever that is. Yeah.
Yeah, are you gonna PDF it?
We can read it all on X.
I think if you do it that way, you know, we have to search for each other.
PDF it and you...
Yeah, give me, just send it to me at kuplikewat.com.
Are you keeping all of these copies?
Keep them, I say.
So, if you want to go hunting, oh, you can go hunting. You never mind.
And so, that's...
I've hunted it for years.
Right.
And it's really bad hunting.
No, it's great hunting. I have no problem with no hunters here. They don't get a lot, so they really want it.
This is gonna be a vegetable farmer?
Yeah.
I walked out there five, six years ago. You were gonna try to donate it to the Department of JRC. And it was falling to rain and I went out there and it looked like most of the grass. I went in and shoot. About halfway to my knee, there's a...
I don't think we put a park here.
Why put a swimming pool there?
One final housekeeping detail. As you know, there would be a resolution.
Right, yeah.
Now, again, mechanics can do one of two ways. I can prepare the resolution. The cost obviously got to be passed along with the pursuant, the applicant. Alternatively, you can let their attorney do it and I'll review it. The review would be at a lesser cost to the applicant. Either way, you know, the town cannot...
How do you all want to do it?
Prepared if it's successful.
Right, then I'll review it, so there'll be a minimal charge to the applicant, because I'm very recent.
Yeah.
No?
I gotta sneak.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. You guys are great.
Thank you.
How many would you like me to leave all?
We don't get them.
What do you have?
They want...
They got overheads. They make some...
They posted that a hundred?
Yep.
Think about that.
Mechanics, if you were...
Huh?
Mechanics, if you were...
I'm just saying.
All right. Yeah.
Listen, I know that. I just put a... I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, right. You're working life.
Okay, guys.
That's why they didn't get my...
Item number two.
Why didn't they get any of this?
You didn't get a fold?
No, no, I'm okay. I have it over your shoulder. Maybe it's not...
Is that an extra fold there? George, is that an extra fold there?
No, it's not that.
No big deal. Maybe inside.
Okay, the next item is...
It was in the folder, yeah.
Okay, that's probably mine. No big deal, please.
Okay. Okay, let's keep it cheap. The next item is we have a resolution to participate in New York State Property Tax Relief Act for homeowners who suffered substantial property damage during Hurricane Irene and or Tropical Storm Lee. You can see in your packet, you have a letter from Amy Rabbit, our Assemblywoman, and to get relief, in many of the communities in New York State, homes were removed and pushed off of their moorings and foundations and lots and lots of property damage. So, it says catastrophically impact is defined as property owners who lost 50% or more of the value of their property as a result of flooding or other storm damage. So, that's the benchmark you have to reach, the hurdle you have to reach. And what this, if we pass this resolution, what it says is anyone in the town of Goshen who believes that they had property damage that reduced the value at least 50% or more, they can make application to us, to the assessor's office, and we can adjust, and once we verify this is true, we can adjust their assessment for the year 2011, back year 2011, such that they would get a reprieve for paying taxes on a property that was significantly damaged. So, in terms of what we're doing tonight, we have a resolution here. Dennis, why don't you go fill it in?
Yeah, the whereas, the first three whereas paragraphs are simply obligatory, normal recitations as to how we got here, which Doug just outlined. The now therefore paragraph summarizes basically, again, what Doug said, what its little requirements are, that the town board, the town of Goshen, has hereby ratified the terms of the aforementioned relief act, which is state law, and opts to extend the terms and benefits thereof to the citizenry of town of Goshen who own real property and who have lost 50% or more of the value of their property as a result of flooding or storm damage from Irene or Tropical Storm Lee, and the interested property owners should submit a written request together with supporting docs to Joanne's home. And a couple of things to clarify, just so we can understand. That is the homeowner's estimate of evaluation decrease. When they request or apply to Joanne, if she assesses it and says to the effect, well, you only, you know, received a 40%, or would only receive a 40%, there is no action taken. It's only if Joanne confirms that they have suffered damages which would result in at least a 50% or more reduction in the assessment of the property. That's an astronomically high bar to clear, especially in Goshen, knowing what happened here. But assuming a house was underwater, was moved off its foundation, went down the walk hill, you could possibly get it, but if you think about it, that's a terribly high bar.
And you get hung up on the trees.
It is in a couple of the respects too, because you might look at your prop, I'm just using a simple number, $150,000. You say, hey, you got it, I was going there. And you say, I got 50% damage, but the person thinks it's $75,000 when it isn't because you gotta take, you gotta take the land out separately.
That's right.
And...
And it's all assessment value.
It's not the age value.
It's assessment value, all right? Meaning the damage is such that it would result in, that's the threshold that they have to meet with the assessors. That's why the assessor is involved.
And I think a lot of these people that filed might not even take that into consideration.
Yeah, that's why I put some verbiage in it so that when people come into town hall for someone to get a copy of the resolution, if it's passed, it gives them some understanding. If you just told them they're entitled to relief, everybody in town may be applying for it, and it's needless aggravation of work there. It's a substantial pressure.
Yeah.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion regarding this?
Someone?
Your second?
Second.
Okay, George, you had a question?
No, I was, I'm just, I'm second.
Okay. The, I did talk this over with the assessor. I did talk it over with Neil. They concur with what Dennis just said, that it would be very, it's a high hurdle to...
Yeah, it's very difficult. Not saying it couldn't happen, but it's very difficult.
And, you know, in the town of Goshen, we had very little damage that we think could
...JRC and it was falling in rain and I went out there and it looked like it was the grass. I went in, about halfway to my knees.
I don't think we put a park here.
One final housekeeping detail. As you know, there would be a resolution.
Right, yeah.
Now, again, mechanics can do one of two ways. I can prepare the resolution. The cost obviously got to be passed along with the pursuit of the applicant. Alternatively, you can let their attorney do it and I'll review it. The review would be at a lesser cost to the applicant. Either way, you know, the town cannot go through.
How do you all want to do it?
Prepared if it's successful.
Then I'll review it and so there'll be a minimal charge to the applicant. Because I'm very recent.
Yeah.
No?
I got a sneeze. And you're... Wait for us all. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. You guys are great. Thank you.
How many would you like me to leave all?
We don't get them.
What do you have on your list?
They got overhead, but still they make some...
They're posted at 100.
They're posted at 100?
Yeah.
Think about that.
So it was just saying something.
Mechanics, if you were to... Mechanics, if he was...
All right. Yeah. Well, you don't get the book. But I didn't really know whether it was a certain... I'm just saying to myself, oh, God. Listen, I know that. I just put it on three hours. Hey, I got an electric...
Oh, yeah, right. You're working life.
Okay, good.
That's why they didn't get my...
Item number two.
Why did he get any of this?
There you go.
I want you to... You didn't get a phone?
No, 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 I'm okay. It's over your shoulder. Maybe it's not. Probably not at all.
Is that an extra phone there? George, is that an extra phone there?
No, it's not that old.
No big deal. Maybe it's not.
Okay. Okay, the next item is...
Okay, that's probably mine. No big deal, please.
Okay. Okay, well, keep it cheap. The next item is we have a resolution to participate in New York State Property Tax Relief Act for homeowners who suffered substantial property damage during Hurricane Irene and/or Tropical Storm Lee. You can see in your packet you have a letter from Amy Rabbit, our Assemblywoman. And to get relief, in many of the communities in New York State, homes were removed and pushed off of their moorings and foundations and lots and lots of property damage. So it says catastrophically impact is defined as property owners who lost 50% or more of the value of their property as a result of flooding or other storm damage. So that's the benchmark you have to reach, the hurdle you have to reach. And what this, if we pass this resolution, what it says is anyone in the town of Goshen who believes that they had property damage that reduced the value at least 50% or more, they can make application to us, to the assessor's office. And we can adjust, and once we verify this is true, we can adjust their assessment for the year 2011, back year 2011, such that they would get a reprieve for paying taxes on a property that was significantly damaged. So in terms of what we're doing tonight, we have a resolution here. Dennis, why don't you go through it?
Yeah, the whereas, the first three whereas paragraphs are simply obligatory, normal recitations as to how we got here, which Doug just outlined. The now therefore paragraph summarizes basically, again, what Doug said, what its requirements are. That the town board, the town of Goshen, should hereby ratify the terms of the aforementioned relief act, which is state law, and opts to extend the terms and benefits thereof to citizenry of town of Goshen who own real property and who have lost 50% or more of the value of their property as a result of flooding or storm damage from Irene or Tropical Storm Lee. And the interested property owners should submit a written request together with supporting docs to join us all. And a couple of things to clarify, just so you understand. That is the homeowner's estimate of evaluation decrease. When they request or apply to Joanne, if she assesses it and says to the effect, well, you only, you know, received a 40%, or would only receive a 40%, there is no action taken. It's only if Joanne confirms that they have suffered damages which would result in at least a 50% or more reduction in the assessment of the property. That's an astronomically high bar to clear, especially in Goshen, knowing what happened here. But assuming a house was underwater, was moved off its foundation, went down the walk hill, you could possibly get it. But if you think about it, that's a terribly high bar.
And you get hung up on the trees.
It is in a couple of respects too, because you might look at your prop, I'm just using a simple number, $150,000. You say, hey, you got it, I was going there. And you say, I got 50% damage. But the person thinks it's $75,000 when it isn't because you've got to take the land out separately.
That's right. And it's all assessment value. It's not the age of damage. It's assessment value, all right? Meaning the damage is such that it would result in, that's the threshold that they have to meet with the assessors. That's why assessors involved.
And I think a lot of these people that filed might not even take that into consideration.
Yeah, that's why I put some verbiage in it so that when people come into town hall for someone to get a copy of the resolution, if it's passed, it gives them some understanding. If you just told them they're entitled to relief, everybody in town may be applying for it. And it's needless aggravation of work there. It's a substantial pressure.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion regarding this?
Someone?
Your second?
Second.
Okay, George, you had a question?
No, I was just on second.
Okay. The, I did talk this over with the assessor. I did talk it over with Neil. They concur with what Dennis just said, that it would be very, it's a high hurdle to...
Yeah, it's very difficult. Not saying it couldn't happen, but it's very difficult.
And, you know, in the town of Goshen, we had very little damage that we think could equate to this particular act, but yet at the same time, we need to make it available for people if someone does have.
Right. And that's why the verbiage of the board notes is such that we ratify what the state did and we opt in, you know, to qualify. Our school district is separate, village is separate, all your other taxing jurisdictions would have to pass the same resolution. This is only from town hacking.
Oh, is that right?
This only applies to town.
Okay, because I did get a call from superintendent of schools wanting to know what we were going to do. And I said, well, I'm going to have to...
Probably because they were going to consider it though.
Well, I think they are. And so he's going to call me the first thing in the morning. I guess they got a meeting maybe tomorrow night or sometime.
Yeah, every jurisdiction has to do it on their own.
Any other questions to answer?
Just more of a comment, you know, we have to pass this by January 23rd. Certainly with that. But the deadline for the property owners is March 8th. They have to apply.
Yeah. From the side, Jerry Corey was in Doug's office today. She was told, look, come back tomorrow, because this would be newsworthy, in case there is somebody out there who suffered tremendously. And they should be aware of the potential...
We think we have one person who's already voiced an opinion they want to apply. And it's in the village. And that's a tough... Well, I mean, that's their...
Right, absolutely.
Sure. Okay. All right.
And it's one year.
Yes, for 2011, I guess that's done. Madam Clerk, may I roll a call vote, please?
Councilman Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Nuvo.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Supervisor Bluefield.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next one is, we've had, we have, we had two different companies come in and wanted to share with us thoughts on how they can save us money on our natural gas costs. And so Bill Standish was the one who got the appraisals or the proposal, I'm sorry, from these two different companies. And the first one is Advisory Energy Group. And what they were going, what they're going to offer us is a six-month rate of .6587 cents or dollars per therm. Currently, the cost is .705952. So for six months, we're going to save about three and a half cents on each therm of energy we would purchase through them. Now, if we go, so that's for a six-month contract. If we go with a 12-month contract, they would say it would be .7134 per therm, which is higher than the current costs. So that's, and whatever it is, it is, in order to give you sign for six months, it's something, for 12 months, it's something else. Now, Anbit Energy, there is no contract, no lock-in rate. But they say the first billing, for the first two months, you get a 7% discount. After that, you get a 1%. Let me see, guaranteed saves thereafter, the rate will be competitively variable with an annual savings of 1% less than the incumbent's utility supply. And you can even get more if you refer out, which we're not going to do, but they say if you try to sell the service to other people, you can get additional savings. So at the bottom of all this, I asked Bill, I said, okay, well, what do you recommend after reading these things and just for the board? And as he says, the bottom is difficult to recommend one proposal over the other, from the perspective that the monthly change in New York State electric gas rate is elusive. But I do recommend we go with a six-month fixed rate provided by Advisors Energy and revisit the cost after six months, period. So we're going to save three and a half cents versus the current cost right now and for six months. And then at the end of six months, that's a contract, we go, we do it again. Now, when we start talking about dollars, we're not talking many dollars. We're talking 30, 40, 50 dollars on an annual basis. So I don't think we need to spend a great deal of time on this thing.
He says 614 dollars.
Where? Oh, yeah, but that's...
614 dollars because he, 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 the amount of thermes?
Yeah, but he's going in for, yeah, that's it, it stays that way. Bill's saying that, you know, what can I tell you? He's saying that...
But he's not guaranteed.
There's no guarantee on that.
Guaranteed that there'll be any...
Right. Depends if the price goes up or down. If it goes up, you're going to save more. If it goes down, you're not going to... It's going to cost you more.
Of course you want.
So, I mean, that's the selling point that they're trying to make. Now, right now, the natural gas prices, believe it or not, are coming down. And I guess because of the supply and we've had a light winter and so forth, we're going into the summer and they're going to have lots of natural gas. So I don't think we're talking a great deal of savings. We don't have to do anything.
Let's just look at it.
Look at it some more.
Why don't we sit back? Why don't we just sit back? We're not talking about a lot of money.
Right.
It probably costs us more just talking about it.
Yes. Now, come in May, we're going, May, we're going to renew our electrical contract where we have that big, because our electricals are significant. Okay. So that's, what's the group want to do? Want to hold off doing anything? Okay. We'll postpone it for a while?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Very good. Now, the next item I've gotten here is sundry business updates. You know, I went back to the minutes of last year to find out what's going on that we probably ought to stay active on that we have not finished. And so the first one, I'm going to ask George on the defibrillator locations and the training, when will that take place?
So what I did was is I worked with Rod. In fact, he was here one day and spoke about it. I think I relayed that information. Instead of putting the defibrillator in this room, it's going to be...
Lightning issue.
Instead of putting the defibrillator in this particular room, it would decide that it was a defibrillator that would be right outside that second door there, to be right outside.
Of the registry?
Yeah, we talked about that one day. So Rod is aware of that and he has it on his schedule to install that.
Okay.
The installation out at the EPW garage, I just told him, you know, wherever you think the best place to be.
Right, the jobs that...
So I, I know he went upstairs and he looked at them. And I think he has a pretty good feel for, you know, what he's got to do, but they haven't been installed yet.
Well, you know, the fact is, if we go to Barbara, she can get Mr. Watts installed right away.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, just tell her where you want her to put it.
Okay. Okay, and then Rod will take care of the work.
And he'll take care of it.
Now, as soon as they're up, it'll bother me, Lisa Sherman, she's off usually one day a week, and I'll have somebody go back and instruct the people here as well as the...
Great. Thank you very much. I know you spent a lot of work on that, purchasing and all that.
Yeah, good.
So we should have those things probably by the end of January in service.
I would also, yes. So I'll just tell Barbara to have Watts installed.
Yeah. Okay, the next item is Duchess Quarry and also the sign violation enforcement. And I went back to August 25th, we had a senior folder here, where we reviewed the current status of the sign violation enforcement, and we also talked about the Duchess Quarry mining expansion. And basically, the note from Neil says, he sent out some notices to people who were violation of the law, and they continue to, you know, to have no response except for furniture options. So anyway, he says that, I guess we're going to need to involve ourselves with Dennis and the board, what do we want to do going forward? And I think what we said the last time is the ones who are currently in violation of the law, we need to push on. But then we need to look at the code regarding signs going forward. That's what we said back in the...
Yeah, just so you're aware, in fact, we have been looking at this. I've also been following along with the village because I, George probably handled that, maybe you filled in. Both communities have really archaic, terribly cumbersome signage laws. And now, I know we can address ours, they have to address their own. But we're running into, on a personal basis, I'm running into phenomenal difficulty in the quick check. I mean, you can't even believe the village allows, or does not allow, it's a village. They're very strict, so...
Well, we know we need to look at it again.
Yes, that's a good point.
I guess the question to the board is, you know, is where we know we have violation of current code, do we want to pursue that or do we want to wait until we look at the whole picture again?
I think it's a case by case. Some of them, some of the abuses, like anything else, property maintenance or otherwise, some of them need to be addressed regardless of...
What do you do with once, why you beating on me and not on them?
Well, it depends upon the development of the changes. Let's take the size, for instance. If you're going to allow a size, sign maximum to say 60 square feet, 6 by 10, or pick a whatever number.
Right.
If that's where you're going consensus wise, even though you haven't done it yet, you can back off and not have to, you know, grandfather, if you will, other signs. Some of these people, I analogize it to like, as Priscilla knows, the carters, the maintenance people, there are some people out there who've got, need to be cited, if you will.
Right. Well, I think though, I think, I'm going to do this then, I'm going to ask Neil to get with you on all the ones he sent violations to.
Hopefully he'll correct them, you know.
Well, they're not, they're not going to until we push on them. And then we'll figure out which ones, and I'm going to have him come back when you're here and say, okay, here are the three we're going to do this. In the meantime, you and I, and I think I probably need to work with the planning board on what we want to do in the planners relative to changes in sign...
It'd be a natural for the planning board to do it with your input, the board's input.
Right.
And again, as far as selective enforcement, it's much like traffic stops. You know, I got juice being, the fact that somebody blew by as far as pulling over.
Well, it also depends on what impact it has on the surrounding area. I mean, the neighbors and the sun and so forth. You have a huge sign that's flashiness against the code, and it's flashing at somebody else's bedroom, that's really not a good thing.
And not that we're looking for trouble, but I think just comments, we need to address some of these things. I talked to Priscilla on that, the trash hole, that's going to be addressed. We've got one case, Neil knows that, we have one case where there's a major business operating in Goshen, and they never even came before the planning board for any type of...
Well, and he's had violations to them. I think we...
Yeah, I'm saying, you know, you got to, you got to show them.
And when we go out there, we're probably going to have to go out with the police. This guy's tough.
They're all tough, man.
Only over this guy has given Neil a lot of tough...
But you know, like I told Neil, where you get them is on a transfer. Because on type, they're all going to run through that office. And when it's determined, they know they are in violation, be it sign or whatever, you know, it'll come back to haunt them. But it's just, it's maybe a long week.
Well, you shouldn't have to do that.
Agreed. I agree.
Okay. So anyway, that's it. So what we'll do then, I still lie well, I'm going to have Neil work with you on the violations, which ones need to go to the top of the list, and we'll go, and we'll come back to the board in very near future, what we've developed a patent for. The other thing is, there's been no update on the status of Duchess Quarry application to the DEC. And so we don't know, they have not made application to the town, nor do they need to based on what I've been led to believe. But we do have citizen input on that. People up on the hill that are really agitated that this is going on.
I thought it was determined that they had to.
They're...
They had to make a Kelly, I thought it was Kelly.
Have to make application. Well, she said that, then their attorney, who's a high-powered, one-of-a-kind in this stuff, and no, you don't. And so it's likely right there. Right now, though, the DEC...
The DEC, just so you get the factual, you should be aware, the DEC has approved the permit.
So it's a moot point?
I don't want to really say, George. What it is, you understand, the doctrine of preemption, they call it, like Medicaid, you know, the higher form of government just totally preempts the area in terms of regulation and whatnot. And much like, because again, most times municipalities are not equipped to address things like that, because they're very technically oriented and otherwise. And I know the town was interested in this one, I think they did, or why.
We, we, we are the 100 geologists who created a whole series of questions that need to be answered, forward those to the DEC, very pertinent ones, I thought.
Yeah, I see, I don't know.
And that was the last we heard. So I didn't know the DEC had made a decision to...
Yeah.
What was that, what was that decision?
First couple of weeks in December. It's over a month, or close to a month, yeah. Yeah, I assume whoever your consultant was, and again, just factual information, public record, I assume your consultant must be aware, or whoever that was, you know.
I don't know.
Yeah, something you may want to check, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, Neil doesn't know about it anyway. Okay. But that's going to be a hot issue, I think, with the citizenry out there.
Because, you know, also, just informationally, just for the board's application too. When the DEC grants a permit, they have to send it to the town. You've got to have a copy of it. I don't know where it is, but I'm just telling you, normal course.
I'm worried to follow up on this.
Yeah, so you're aware.
I've got to call there and find out.
They can send and approve a permit, but that doesn't mean if they're not complying with local law, that they can operate under that permit until they meet the local law specification.
You see, I don't want to get into it, but that's, that's, that's preemption doctrine, you know.
Well, what we'll do is we'll look at Rick Golden's handling, Rick's handling along with Neil and this...
There's citizens around that are definitely...
Yeah, that's why, factually, you should be able to be kind of aware.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next item is, but I'm going to put that down for Rick and... Do you want to talk about the FEMA claims for the town?
Yeah, I'll do the best I can on this, based on where we're at, okay? As far as FEMA, let's get first with the, the stuff that's came about from the storms. Some work still needs to be done, and what happens is you cannot submit until all work is done. Now, just to clarify that a little bit, if it's an emergency, you need to get it done by March of 2012. It's not an emergency, we have up until March 23rd, 2013. So most of the stuff that is out there is stuff that is not an emergency, so, but they're working on it. Taking with that, there's also the situation with the two large culverts, which one is Coleman Road and one is Durland, all right? That there is in limbo only because we need to do more investigation with the manufacturer, because the manufacturer's involved in this because of the way it was made, the way it let go, because, I don't know if you ever saw it, the culverts when they were put in, I was out there when they built them, they're steel, it almost looked like a steel garage, but it has a floor to it. And somehow that floor did not weather the storm. And it just picked it up, turned it and so forth. So it could be a manufacturer defect, it could be an installation defect, there's a lot of different things about that. So that still is in the works, all right?
Now, when those were installed, the manufacturing rep was right there at the time they were put in.
Okay, well, that's a different story there.
So it'll be, it could very well be a...
In fact, Coleman, I remember I was out there, they actually built it right there, our guys, but the manufacturer rep was there, okay? Now, the other, there's another big covert, actually, I consider it like a bridge and a covert, and that's the Hartley Road covert. And that's basically, we got FEMA, I don't, me and Doug were talking about this, I don't know if it's FEMA or a grant, but we've been approved of $378,000 to correct this situation. Some of it can be done by us, some of it's going to have to be done by the outside because it's concrete, pillows and all this other stuff that has to be put in. Other $378,000 are expensed, or it's 12 and a half percent. Doug figured that out to be by 50,000.
47 to 80.
See that? He told me around 50, 47, 48, okay. All right.
He was one of my figures.
Taking that into consideration, probably, as Robert put it, we're going to have to up the money to do this, and then we're going to have to wait for when they give it back to us. All right, but based on, and this is Gene, Doug talked in the office today, based on the fact that we're getting 378, actually, we're getting 328 or a little bit more, for the type of work we're getting, we need to move on this next year, all right? And I guess Doug can get into the project and if you want to finance and all that, it's a whole different issue, but I'm just getting you caught up on some of this stuff here, all right? So that's where we're at, as far as that stuff.
Yeah, on that one, Robert did talk to me about it and made it, probably going to end up like the, the fight, we put it on the hand between parks, you borrow the money, you do the job, you get the money back, you can pay off the debt. But it could be a year or two, there's no guarantee how fast they're going to give us that money.
Where is this on the...
He's asking that.
Is it, where is this...
I just had a question.
If you were to go past the IWF, where I start going down, if you went and visited the property that we had in front of us...
There you have a thing.
It's like, it almost looks like you're going over a little overpass, very minor. That, that's it, because it's not like a round covert, it's almost like going over a little bridge, but it's all, a lot of concrete and so forth. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the one.
Now, how critical is this? According to Robert, fairly critical. We all need to go out and look at this, and we need Robert to come and talk to us. This is just an update, I think on FEMA, anything we're going, money's we're going to get, so...
Well, let's put it this way, FEMA, I don't think they would give you the money if they're going $78,000, if it didn't need fixing.
And I certainly don't want to look that gift card.
Right. All three of those culverts are very, very costly culverts, and we need to pursue them all and get them done as quickly as we can, because it's money in the bank for us, let the federal government do it. But we'll have to work through the process. But I think probably what we need to do on each of these, I think, is we get more information on the Coleman Road and the Durland Road, because that's going to take some real engineering, technical assistance from the installers and their technical people. What we think has happened is maybe the apron in front of the metal sheeting underneath wasn't deep enough, we worked out underneath that and fucked it up, so... Do they need to come all the way out? Do they need to come all the way out, or can they repair them, or what do you do to fix it? And I don't know, so anyway.
The other question might be too, as a matter of fact, did it really need to bottom that goofy lift up?
Yeah.
Could have been a slab of concrete going off, you know.
But anyway, but in terms of FEMA, the answer we got tonight is that we put in for the work after the work's completed. The emergency work has to be done by the end of March of this year. You have until, I think, March.
One year.
A year after that, the bigger one, so we'll, we'll have to stay with it so we don't lose that money. Hey, the next one is Kenny, I've asked him to look at the Stonehead well number three. This is the one we drilled here in the last year.
Yeah, um, I'm trying to give you a very short, which I said, I'm not talking with Brad, Mr. Nautilus, after all. Matter of fact, Lou was there, so it was nice. But something that the well is getting groundwater into the well, which Orange County has helped the pubs, is not acceptable. So there are some options. One is to sleeve fluently, sleeve the casing of it, and hope that stops it. Or install a series of filters and plants that would inject chemicals to purify the water. Now, the problem is, once with the, if you wanted to sleeve it, there's a test that they can put on the inside of the well that will let you know basically if the sleeve is a doable option.
Right.
The test would be roughly forty thou, four thousand dollars. And if they find a problem, that's okay, they could sleeve out a question, approximately nine thousand dollars, okay? That's one option. The filters, and I don't like to say chemical term, but whatever it takes to remove the bacteria is another option. We never priced on that one. But what that would, he said would be inexpensive, but the long-term testing can be very, very expensive. And that's where we kind of lost.
Special chemical corrosion, whether.
Yeah, they're still doing the house.
Yeah, I don't, I thought you guys had for the one well, you know, this system we installed would do both, which we might upset the people, but the bottom, the most damaging part is it can be very expensive to maintain the testing. Sean, a hopman now, engineers are going to check with the county on how often they have tested. Once a year, once a quarter, once a so, that can be a very expensive option. So we had asked Mr. Hopman, his thoughts on it, and rising, hold on to the town board first to review at a later date. But there are two options available to us, or the third option is to abandon the well, which I think I looked at Lou, and we looked at Mr. Nautilus.
That's the new one, that's the new one.
So after fifty thousand dollars, I wouldn't even consider it an option, but have to be an option. That is an option, we have to go somewhere.
Well, at four thousand dollars, at least we can just determine what the problem is. We've got to know what that is. Well, we know what the problem is, according to when I talked.
Well, where it is.
It's groundwater that's going right down the edge of that casing to the agri fur. And, and so when I talked to Dennis Lindsay, this is a month or so ago, he said, Doug, what we've got to do is go around that thing and put in a great big seal. Like they go up in the casing, I don't know, far they go down and they put some kind of seal.
That's what the test would tell you.
And so, but they've got, but the fact is, they've got to come back to us. The county is saying, okay, we're going to give you the extension and all this, because we've been living without this well a long time. But the fact is, once they started testing that well after it was drilled, they found this contamination, and it's continued long enough that they now know it's coming from groundwater.
By the way, the first test, Phil, because I haven't heard it so far, just to elaborate a little. The first test tells you that, will tell you if the second one's going to work, all right? They know the problem.
Okay.
The first test tells you, yes, that solution will work. So it's like spending money. I mean, you could roll the dice and just go to the second solution, but then you've got, you've got nine thousand at stake versus forty-five. So the full five is probably about thirteen-five.
Yes, making incorrect terms, crap shoot.
Yeah.
You want to test out and say, oh, this is perfect. Oh, thank goodness, my fault.
They've got good money after that.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's.
Well, I think, I think what we're going to do.
They know the problem.
But you're not going to know what the problem is. The test would determine where the problem was, but they know where it is.
They know exactly what the problem is.
What's happening, some bacteria is in the what, man?
What do they call it, plant matter?
What's the status of the money in the Stonehead border?
I have no idea.
That's lots, it's really, huh?
Yeah.
Well, they're not, they've got wealthy people out there. You can't, you can't hide.
That was my point.
You can't hide, there are a couple of things we need to do in Stonehead.
Do you want to go back to the building?
Yeah.
No, because we're all.
We're now doing, we're valid. We have money at one time. Man, that was sensitive, man.
Can we go one hour, Mr. Nautilus? So I suppose Mr. Nautilus gives, now you get something in Mount Park.
Great. But anyway. I think there are a couple.
So easy to work with.
But there are a couple of things out there we need to do beyond this. We need to put in, this is the only subdivision that doesn't have two meters, so when we get this fixed, then we're going to work on the meter. But we have that schedule, we'll see. Okay, the property reveal, I asked Joanne for, I asked Joanne for a kind of an update.
Yeah.
As of today, the goal is by January thirty-first, the goal date is to have the project complete. By that, I mean going out and assessing all the properties and getting that information into the computer. There are approximately four hundred properties out of fifty-five hundred that remain to be completed. Two hundred of those are homes, and two hundred of those are, I guess, vacant properties, made commercial properties, but they're not residences. And she feels very confident that we can have that done by the thirty-first of the month. Then in February, she says she wants to go, issue to the, to all the property owners, impact notices, which will be sent to the property owners using the two thousand and eleven as the basis of comparison. And what she's going to do is say, okay, you have the new rates, new assessments, here's what you pay, and here's what you pay under the old assessments. Now, that's one where about a third go up, a third go down, and a third stay the same. That's what we're hoping for. I said, well, I don't know, maybe if they all go up, we could use the money, but.
I wouldn't even joke about that. I wouldn't even joke about that. Neil's got that on the public.
That was just, he was just kidding.
One of the staff, the people in the building just, ah, thank you so much, Kenny.
Okay, the next item is by the.
You know the water, what else?
By the thirty-first of March, all the New York State evaluation data needs to be in, okay? In other words, if you've got a house being built, whatever the status is on the thirty-first, we'll update that snapshot. So if you're fifty percent done or seventy-five percent done, that goes into the assessable phase. May first, we have intended assessment roll. May twenty-second, we have grievance day. By the way, we've had about twenty, I think it was twenty-eight grievances that either been resolved or pulled, canceled. So we're down in the low fifties right now. And they go tomorrow with the scars, wow, I'm sorry, I'm jumping here. We're talking about scars, seventy-eight, I think is what we had for the year. They're going to court tomorrow, a few of those, and so they're working on that. Then on grievance day is, of course, people can grade their assessments on the one day, the twenty-second of May. And then the final roll is published on July first. I asked her how our consultant's working on this, and where is the county, and where is the state on this? And they feel pretty good. We've made application to the state, they're going to give us five dollars per parcel for the cost of our doing the job. And we're getting ready to give that same information, bill the county. So when it's all said and done after July first, we'll get ten dollars per parcel or fifty-five thousand dollars back.
Was the county going to give us five dollars, ten dollars?
Yeah, that's it, that's it, five for them and five for the state.
I know, I know, I tried to empty that one.
And we also build the county, they're going to share in the cost of the photographs, and we're getting six thousand more, and so we'll get about sixty-one thousand dollars when it's all said and done, which we pay for what we've done.
Yeah, that should cover.
Should cover. This was, uh. Talking about that was handling this.
Well, I like, I like to get paid for what we, you know, for what we do.
Is that the legal fees?
Yeah, believe it or not, I think, well, I shouldn't say, I think you.
Legal fee.
Yeah, there are no legal fees. The legal fees are coming after the, after the.
I think they call that sarcastic whip, right?
I think you're going to make.
Go on, George, I like that, that was a good one.
The, the next item is.
I heard, let me show them all.
I heard the Rick Association, I got a letter today, and they're, they're freezing their rates for us for two thousand and twelve like they did in eleven and like they did in ten. So their last increase was back in nine. And then, just before walking, they also got a letter from our labor attorney, the same thing, so everything's being frozen.
Yeah, across the board, across the board, they were frozen. Now, some of them formally notified you.
But on that one, Thursday night, we're going to have to have a resolution or a motion authorizing me assigned one with the labor attorney.
Did they send me the contract?
Yes, they did.
Okay, I didn't know.
See, now, George, did your rate, your rate freeze too?
Absolutely.
Sounds very good to me.
Is that ninety dollars an hour?
Exactly, I even reduced them because I forget. It's my son said.
No, 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 it's thirty-two dollars an hour.
Ah, gee, it's more like a nickel.
Now, you're hurting them, now you're going to hurt them.
More like a nickel an hour.
One item that left off here also, and it is the Orange and Rockland Utilities. We're going to have a public hearing on this at seven o'clock on the, seven or seven-thirty, I think it's seven, but anyway, we'll find out. It'll be in the paper. For, on January nineteenth, we're going to have the public hearing on the D E I S of Orange and Rockland. So the copy of that, volume one and volume two of that D E I S is in the clerk's office. So between now and the nineteenth of January, behooves us on the board to go in there and see what it's all about so we can be able to, because we're going to be there along with the planning board, because we're going to have one of those joint sessions for the public hearing.
It's like a Thursday night, is it?
Uh, is it Thursday? Okay, what's today? It's nineteen, then Thursday, yeah.
That's very funny.
So that's that.
Just so the board's aware, that's the meeting which the planning board chairs. You'll be occupying the first row, it was a joint hearing, and they're actually, it's on a combined site plan seeker for the special use.
Actually, there are two public hearings that night. We're going to have it in Orange and Rockland, and then we're going to have that new bus company, that's a bus garage out on Seventeen M.
You or the planning board?
Planning board, that one, not us. But we can, through that one, that's a nice rateable as well.
Just out of curiosity, where's that going?
By the, on Seventeen M Industrial Park.
Part of the Smith project, is that called?
No, 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 it's part of the, where you got the storage and.
Baco.
Baco and the, the truck and trailer repair.
Or this is a bus, or this is a bus?
The other one's a truck and.
This is, this is different. This is a brand-new business that wants to come in, they're really strapped. I mean, they, they've done everything that's required, they've been the planning board, they've got their D E I S that they're doing moving fast. Put a nice rateable for us, I don't know the total value, but what they're going to do, they're going to, they have buses, school buses. I guess they do a lot of work for a lot of, Orange County Community College to.
All over?
Believe it or not, and so we'll hear more about it on that.
This is the actual bus company?
This is the bus, the bus company, they own the buses, I understand, and they repair.
John Corrigan, it's not John Corrigan. Oh, that's interesting.
It's another one.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, he's big, yeah.
Well, this isn't that big, but, yeah.
No, it's interesting.
All right. So with that, is there anything, I mean, that's kind of a potpourri of what we've been working on through years and left over. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to?
Yeah, that's all. That's a conversation. Just, I just want to stay on that for the board on Friday. Between four and eight, the highway department's giving Bob, since Bob is retiring, a little party over at the, what do you call it?
Sitement.
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 Sitement Firehouse. So if you want to go there, wish him well and so forth.
It's coming Friday?
At one time, at one time.
Four to eight.
Just walk in.
Is that, just out of curiosity, is that rented, but at the renter's?
I have no idea. Either they're, so that's.
And just for the board.
Because I know you have to rent, rent.
Yeah.
If you're not a fire member.
Yeah, but you got a lot of guys on the.
Oh, we got all kinds of firemen.
But even then, sometimes they have to rent it, I'm just curious.
I have no idea.
Well, what they did say is they're going to give Bobby cash, Bobby has to make a donation, I guess there'll be a pot of cup or something if you want to.
No, no, a pot of cup.
Well, you listen.
If you want to do it, contact Michelle or somebody.
It's a pushover.
I don't know.
That's the gift.
I thought you said it would be a donation, one five-ten.
Anything else, anybody?
Oh, okay.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion now, we adjourn the meeting and go to executive session with the intent, uh, to talk about the tax here, share your update.
Some more.
Second?
Second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, thank you very much. Jerry, how you doing now?
Hello, Jerry.
I'm doing very well.
They should, but they shouldn't.
What's the say of that?
Hey.
That's the video. That's a tricky boss, man. You know, but you don't. I mean, in that instance, I truly will not.
She got paid for the rest.
Neil, you look formal.
Very obvious.